My name is Robert P. I'm current chairman of Budget and Finance Committee. And I'm going to do my best to introduce everybody around. I'm really happy to see quite a few of our fellow commissioners that are not on the Budget Committee also in attendance. But I'm going to start with our mayor sitting to my left, Joe Carr. Welcome, Mayor, of course. And to my right is Mark Tucker. He's our Assistant Finance Director. And Michael, on further down there is our Finance Director. Our Budget Committee is made up of our Vice Chair, Paul Johnson, who's also Chairman of the Row Board; Trey Gooch, who is our Chairman Pro Tem of the Commission; Wayne Irving; Craig Harris, who is Chairman of our Steering Committee; Steve Piercy; Enchanto Sorino; and also, in attendance, we've got Oliver down in her seat, normal seat. And let's see, there's Chairman Phil Dodd, who's Chairman of the Board of Education. And next to him is the Commission Chairman, Jeff Phillips, coming on across. We've got another Chairman hiding back in there, Michael Cus, who's Chairman of Public Works. Also, on my far left there is Craig and Carl, I'm sorry, I'm running dead this afternoon, Carl Boyd. And next to him is our Vice Chair of Health and Ed, Phil Wilson. Excuse me. I'll spit these all out. Like I said, I'm kind of surprised I've got so many in. And next to him is Chairman Pettis Reed, Chairman of Public Safety. So, welcome all of you. And did I miss any of our commissioners? I got, Anthony, I'm sorry. Anthony Johnson. See, I already introduced one Johnson. So, at any rate, let's see, any other commissioners that I didn't overlook or overlook? I want to mention, we've also got Claire Maxwell in attendance, who's on our Board of Education. Want to welcome her. And yes, I see another board member back there, and I can't make her out. Francis. Now I can see her. She's got a pole between me and her. Francis, welcome also. We've got a couple of other elected officials hiding out there. Our Sheriff, Mike Fitzhugh, of course. Anybody else that I've overlooked besides Austin Maxwell is also hiding out back there. I believe he's on the City Council. At any rate, welcome to all of you, and I appreciate you coming. And I see Commissioner Beverley making his way in. So, again, welcome all of you. I want to give you a quick overview of what we're going to do tonight. Basically, you will be able to come to the podium, state your name and your address. We need that for the record. And you will have a minimum of three minutes to speak. There will be a timer on there. There will be a buzzer. Please adhere to that. And we'll leave that up on the board. We'll also, Michael, our Finance Director, will be given an overview of the budget that we have proposed. And this is the budget that was posted for public viewing, was recommendations from the Mayor and the Budget Committee. And having said all that, Michael, I'm going to let you start off for us.
Thank you. Alrighty. The first thing, I'll give a brief, kind of a brief overview of kind of how we got here and kind of up to this point. So, we started this process with the Budget Committee back on May 4th. Of course, my office and the Mayor's office started this process months before that. But this was first presented to the Budget Committee on May 4th. And since then, there has been several meetings. Each department has had a chance to come before the committee, talk about their budget, make a presentation to this committee. And then, again, all this was televised on Channel 19 and, I believe, on the county's YouTube page. Also, there's several iterations of how the budget has changed on the Finance Department's website. I'll show you there at the end of this how to get there if you want to see all the iterations of those changes. We've labeled those so that you can kind of see the flow. It was published in the newspaper that should run today. It has also been published on our website. The publication has been published for the last several days. I know, I've seen some of you print that off. That is still there today. It is still there tonight. So, if you leave here tonight and you don't have a copy, you can go print that down. And then, obviously, tonight, we're here for public comments tonight. So, the first thing is I'll show is a little brief history of the tax rate, because I get a lot of questions of that. What's highlighted in yellow is a reappraisal year. So, you can see over the years how the tax rate has changed. And, of course, you would expect a pretty large drop with a growing county for it to drop every reappraisal year, and it has. But that is out there. I do find that interesting, just to see the trend of where we stand. And then, the next slide is really going to be what our penny brings. We get that question a lot. And really, what that is, is every penny of property tax, how much revenue does that bring in? So, this year, it brings in a little bit less than $1.5 million. And one of the things I always like to point out, because I see it posted a lot online or, you know, on interviews and things like that, we estimate a conservative estimate, because we never get 100% of property tax collections. And also, throughout the year, we have additions and deletions and things like that. We have people that contest their property values. And so, if you took the exact assessed value to the penny, it would be a little higher than that. But we take into account a delinquency that we turn over. And so, that's how we come up with the estimate for the penny. And so, that's what that slide is, is there. And you'll see at the top, the valuation for the county and the public utilities is there. Alrighty. So, this is going to be a budget summary as a whole. It's going to have all of the county's budgeted funds. The first thing I'll start out is you can see the current tax rate we're under is 1.6162. And what was proposed is a 26 cent, .2613 cents tax increase, which would be 16.17%. And then, I'm going to go over a little bit of a brief, some significant changes in the budget to talk about there. So, starting with the general fund, that's the county's operating fund. Our current deficit is currently 32, a little over $32 million. Of course, that fluctuates depending on amendments. And then, overall, our deficit started this year at a little, almost $64 million. And so, as you can see, that deficit has brought significantly down to right at $7 million. But one of the big increases in the County General Fund this year is 15 additional firefighters that were hired last fiscal year that are fully funded this year. And then, with that, is an additional 64 personnel. However, 61 of those positions are all public safety related, being Sheriff's Department or Fire Department. So, that would bring a balanced fund to the County General. And I'll touch on fund balance on the next slide. But that brings, it does show an $11,000 surplus, but that's due to rounding on the tax rate. The next fund is our Solid Waste Fund. That fund is balanced. It has no property tax in there. And that fund does have three new positions, but we were able to balance that fund. The next one is our ambulance fund. There is a proposed additional 2.52 cents going into that fund. And that fund has an additional 18 EMS workers to staff the new public health and safety buildings. And I won't touch on some of the smaller funds, but I will touch on, once you get down to the school funds. This year, the schools have a new funding formula. That is part of this budget as well. That is called TISA, or TISA, depending on how you pronounce it. That was an additional approximately $40 to $50 million coming into our schools. And then, I get this question a lot, how much do the schools make up for our budget? And their operating budgets make up approximately a little over 67% of our budget. And if you include the debt service related to schools, we're between 73% and 75% of the budget related to schools. You'll also notice that the cafeteria fund has a deficit of $4.4 million. That is a planned spin-down. The USDA requires us to spin down any reserves. We spend that on things like updating kitchen equipment, things like that. You'll also notice no property tax goes into that fund. That fund is funded by lunch payments and the USDA. So, that is a strategic spin-down there. And then, the other thing I want to touch on is our debt service fund. This fund includes funding for a new high school. This body passed appropriations for us to borrow $156 million for additions to Oakland, Riverdale, and Smyrna. This also anticipates a new elementary school coming next year in that fund as well. That fund shows a deficit currently budgeted for next year of $1.8 million. However, we don't expect it to be there when we, be that way when we end the year. We do expect some improvement there, is why it's showing that. So, that kind of hits the highlights on all the budgeted funds. Now, this slide really talks about our fund balance. The other one was our revenue expenditures and our operating deficits or surplus. This fund really talks about our fund balances. And so, I want to touch on a couple of things. One, it's very important for us to maintain a healthy fund balance. And I'll point to that. We had a recent example of that with these high school additions. We were able to borrow our money from ourselves and no interest cost as we go to the bond market and issue bonds, which allows us to obtain better bond interest rates. Also, keeping a healthy fund balance for us has allowed us to save several millions of dollars withholding a AAA and a AA+ bond rating. And when calculated, that savings just on the high school additions and the elementary school next year would be a little over, conservatively, a little over $6 million just on those two debt issuances. The other thing that allows us to do is to make payroll and not have to gain bridge loans, because we get that question a lot, why do you need savings so high? And we only get, the majority of our revenue comes from property tax, which comes in from October through February. So, we have to, you know, utilize our savings from a cash flow basis for the remaining months of the year to be able to make payroll and pay our bills. So, I get that question quite a lot. This proposed budget does meet our minimum fund balance policy requirements from both the state and the Commission's fund balance policies. Then, another question we get quite often, I want to make sure I include this slide, is where can I see the proposed budgets this year? If you go to the finances webpage and you see over there to the left, Proposed Budgets by Year, if you click there, that's when you can see the changes that this Budget Committee has made throughout the process. You can also see the publication as it was published in the paper, with some additional details that were not in the paper. It'll give you some more detail about each fund and what the changes were. And then, where do we go from here after tonight? If this body deems it necessary, we will have a meeting tomorrow night to discuss the public hearing or any other changes. And then, on June 21st, we will recommend a tax levy and appropriations resolutions that will then be forwarded on to the full Commission on June 26th for the adoption of the budget.
Thank you, Michael. Couple of things I want to mention. This is a public hearing. This is not a question and answer period. So, just so you know, your questions will be noted. They will be discussed, but we will not be discussing them tonight. The only other thing I want to mention is you can come up and speak the three minutes. If everyone speaks and someone feels compelled that they need to speak again, we will entertain that. So, I don't want anybody to leave here not having a chance to say their piece. Now, having said that, normally, I would open the floor right now for someone to come up. I did have someone call me that has to get to work on time, so I'm going to actually call on that person, which is Ms. O'Neill, to speak first. After that, anyone that would like to get in line, again, state your name and your address. And I'll go to this podium over there. You can pull the speaker down where we can hear you. You may have to push it up in some cases.
My name's Melanie Adams O'Neill. I live at 2001 Wilson Hill Road in Reddable. Since I'm not the most eloquent public speaker, I'll be reading my comments. Thank you very much. Last spring, many of the elected officials in this room campaigned for election on a platform of common sense, being fiscally conservative and wanted limited government. Less than a year later, these same people are now in office and tonight are proposing the largest county property tax in decades. Many of these officials claim to be conservative Republicans, some even Tea Party members. But this historically large tax increase sounds like something right out of our liberal playbook of California and Washington. If you ran as a fiscal conservative, please remember the promises that you made to the citizens of this county. Look at the proposed county budget and ask yourself, do we have to have all this spending? Or are there some wants in that budget that can be cut? This is the same thing that you ask every Rutherford County citizen to do on a monthly basis in their homes. Before you pass the Chicago-style deep-dish property tax increase onto the working people and fixed-income retirees that voted you into office based on your conservative campaign promises, ask yourself if there are specific wants that could be cut out of this budget. Wants like nothing but paid rural firefighters instead of just having a paid and volunteer staffing mix for our rural departments like Kettrel and Last Cassis. Are all these new positions needed in the proposed budget, or could the Commission take a look at wants for our cuts? Does the school system really need all of those new six-figure salary positions at the central office that the new Director of Schools is asking for? And the elderly fixed-income taxpayers of our county will now have to pick the tab up for? He wants a newly-created Department Director of School position, paying six figures to this new position, propose the budget to do part of the job that he accepted less than a year ago. He is getting paid close to $200,000 to do that job. Now, I don't know about y'all, but if I got hired to do a job and I couldn't do it, I wouldn't be there. And I certainly could not ask for help getting six-figure income. While we're talking about local education, why is this County Commission not asking the Rutherford City Council to consolidate the two local school systems that is costing the county taxpayers over $3 million in shared county taxes a year? Why are you folks not hollering from the rooftops about this wasteful duplication of public school services that is helping to drive this tax increase? It's time that we quit paying for two school central offices full of six-figured salaries and consolidate the school systems in this county. If this Commission advocated this, we would not be having to raise our property taxes as much for the next time we built an elementary school. I ask the Committee to look harder at the county budget instead of taking the easy way out and just raising our taxes.
Wants to write her names down. Chairman P., Commissioners. My name is Charlotte P. I live at 1501 Cripple Creek Road, and I am a dying breed. I am a local farmer. And there aren't many left, and there won't be many left in Rutherford County if property taxes increase at this rate. I own and manage a land-grant farm in Reddable that was granted to my father's family for fighting in the Revolutionary War. That's a part of history. And there's pressure to keep that farm in the family. And this property tax will not help keep that farm in the family. There are very few land-grant farms left in Rutherford County. I am also representing the Rutherford County Farm Bureau Board and the Farm Bureau Leadership Committee Chair. We have 20, over 24,000 members here in Rutherford County and 1,200 ag-voting members in Rutherford County. And I have to say, we are against the property tax. There are other options: wheel tax, sales tax, impact tax, builder's tax. A property tax to local farmers is a detriment to their business, to their practice. There is a, everyone wants to buy local food, support local farmers. This impact tax will not help that. It is a detriment to the local Rutherford County farmers. Losing farmland, in Rutherford County, we are losing farmland at a troubling rate due to builders and developers. The cost of farming has gone up while the builders and developers and realtors and those moving in are making money. It's an extra burden to those large property owners. There is a better way, there has to be a better way, to share the cost of growth than the 16% property tax. I know the state did not come through for the county, but there's got to be a different way and put the pressure on the state. Please support your local farmers.
We've got to have some more people from Reddable out there, surely, so.
Valerie Parker, 2708 Dora Elizabeth Court. Don't write that down. Ladies and gentlemen, there is another way. And I've really learned a lot just listening to the two folks that have said things before me. It's not realistic, this tax. I've lived here more than 30, maybe 40 years. And to accommodate the influx of newcomers, you want me to pay this? Get real. We have already done that. We've paid our taxes. We don't enjoy the traffic, the discourteous drivers, the construction mess that rob us of our native trees and scenery. It's a responsibility of you, the elected officials, to prepare in advance and not borrow money to build infrastructure, for one thing. Two, the Planning Commission needs to approve new developments that enhance our county and to know in advance how this development will impact our current infrastructure. In other words, what is the cost of adding more homes and people? Then, you could vote on it. And for developers to pay for the infrastructure that their new development causes when building new houses and profiting. Why don't they do that? Number four, we need those seven representing Rutherford County in the Tennessee General Assembly. Charlie Baum, Tim Rudd, Brian Terry of Murfreesboro, Mike Sparks, Robert Stevens of Smyrna, Shane Reeves, Dawn White of Murfreesboro, to secure additional funding for Rutherford County with more local government revenues from development tax as proposed. They implied in a letter to Mayor Carr that they are working diligently to secure additional funding for Rutherford County to offset the cost of growth without raising our taxes. They have committed, haven't they? They've said that. Well, maybe we can make sure they do just that by contacting each and every one of them. Thank you.
Before you start, I want to make a quick statement. Sue made the statement that she asked us not to write down her name. You being up here is part of a public record, so we're not trying to stalk you, and we won't. But I just wanted to let you know, when you come up here, this is recorded. It'll be on YouTube, so you can go back and look at it. But it's also, the paper can comment on it, whoever comes up and speaks. But part of putting your name on here and come up and speaking is part of a public record. So, I just want you to be aware of that. Sorry, Sue.
I come before you with deep and serious concerns about this proposal for raising property taxes.
Ma'am, let me interrupt. Please give me your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Amanda Crowell, 2814 Crazy Horse in Murfreesboro. Admittedly, I am not as informed in this matter as many of you are, but I do come understanding the needs for the county government and how to make Rutherford County an affordable and sought-after community to raise our children and live out our lives. Mayor Carr says this increase is needed to lower the county's debt burden, cover government expense, and meet educational needs. I feel certain most of us would have less of a problem with an increase if the entire increase in property taxes was to fund education. However, we have seen where Tennessee House Speaker Cameron Sexton from Hamilton County says the state of Tennessee is one of the leading economic states and can do without $2 billion in federal funds for education, which I suspect would impact Rutherford County's education funding and be part of the need for this increase in our property taxes. And the current pie chart for education, based on a lesser rate that I have seen, shows that about half of our property taxes are to fund education and their capital programs. Effective July 1, 2001, Rutherford County initiated its $1 per square foot schools-facilities tax collection policy on new homes, including single-family, townhomes, and duplex-family dwellings, assisted-living facilities, and certain hotels that can be living quarters if kitchen facilities are included in these units. Not-for-profit facilities are exempt, as are public commercial buildings. Maybe it's time to attach this tax to those public for-profit buildings that are being developed all around the city of Murfreesboro and others expanding county locales. Why should the residents subsidize commercial growth? And the same for the new developments going up on old farms and wooded areas. Why not raise that tax to $2 or more to cover the increase in infrastructure needed to support the influx of new residents? Should not the new residents help cover these costs, or at least the developers looking to make a nice profit? The final consideration is the income levels of the county residents. I personally am retired, and my income is fixed, save a cost of living increase that Social Security grants annually. In some years, those increases are so low, a cup of coffee cannot be purchased from McDonald's. And only in 2023 was the near 10% increase sufficient to cover much of the other increases in costs that I have experienced. I'd be the first to say, I'd like to finish.
Or your time is up. You've got a closing statement. I'll let you finish your sentence. If everyone speaks, after that, she still wants to continue speaking, we'll entertain letting her come back. We've got a full house here tonight. Thank you, ma'am.
Please allow me to try to come back and finish.
Break the barrier and be the first to mail up here for speaking. Michael Knowles, 5981 Ocala Road, Murfreesboro. Lifelong resident of Rutherford County. What I see in front of me is 160-plus years' experience in Rutherford County Commission of people that have run this county. 160 years plus, when you add it all up. I did it today. Budget Committees, Steering, Planning, Financial Investment, Government Committees, all these Committees, we have members that are on these Committees. So, therefore, y'all know how to run a government. You should. You've got 160 years-plus experience. You know, we're looking at, you know, a deficit. The deficit numbers changed when we heard it today from what Mayor Carr said in the paper when he made a statement of a $64 million deficit. So, that has changed. But, you know, who are the stewards of the budget and of this county that had to have foreseen a deficit of this nature? We have Planning, Steering, Budget, Finance, and Investment Committees. All these people see what the future's coming. We could see it in our roads. We can see it in the hills that are being, the trees are being taken off the hills. And you see rock. That's all you see from some of the developments that are coming in our county. Our county is not getting prettier. It's getting uglier. You know, I've got some questions. I know this is not a question and answer. You know, my first question is, who is responsible for such a deficit? What are the plans to implement other development taxes and impact fees? You know, the state allows that. In 1997, Rutherford County tried to have different impact fees and development fees. It failed to pass because we didn't have the guts to force it through. Because there is a process, as Mayor Carr knows, he was a state rep for six years, he knows that the state has a process to have counties implement impact fees and development taxes. So, again, those are some of my And those are some of my questions. You know, one bigger question is, you know, we see all these apartment complexes going up. You know, what are their... What do they pay at taxes? Is it the same rate as a residential person? Okay, I saw some nods of that. That's just a big question I've always had. If it's the same rate, I respect it. But short of time, I'm good. Let the next person speak.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Bill Ford. I live at 1512 Veranda Circle, just off Gold Valley Drive. I'm a relative newcomer. I came here in 1991, so that's only 32 years, which is much less than the other speakers. Nevertheless, as a relative newcomer, I have to say, my wife and I love living here. And we're very happy that it's a good, great place to live. But in those 32 years, I have never seen anything that is like this increase. We voted against the previous mayor because the current mayor promised us that the mistakes that were made by the previous mayor would not be repeated. I have to say I'm sad because the current problems are bigger than the previous problems. To an economist, and I'm a former Federal Reserve President, as some of you know, and I taught economics here for 25 years, to an economist, there are two things that matter. One is the population growth, which we have to handle. The other is the inflation growth that also affects what all of you have to decide to do. We don't have exact population figures, but it's about 2% or a little more that the county's resident population is growing. Inflation, as you know from my friends on the Federal Reserve Board, I still talk to them regularly, is down or just under 5%. If you had 5.2, that means for growth of population and inflation, 7% would be a justifiable increase. This increase of 16.2% is less than half that level. The mayor has been quoted, and I know that you don't always get it accurately, in saying that if you all agree to this historically unprecedented increase in spending, that there won't be any more changes in the next two or three years. Now, I have to tell you as a professional economist that is a Federal Reserve leader, that that is not so. We will continue to have increases in house prices and residences, which will increase taxes automatically, and we'll continue to see population growth. So based on the two economic factors, you should be taking this 16% proposal and at least cut it in half. I hope you'll give those thoughts serious consideration, and thank you for your kind attention.
My name is Susan Allen. I live on Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro. And I moved here in 1978, when the population of the entire county was 50,000 people. And I started attending county meetings, the standing committee meetings, commission meetings, back in 2001. So I've followed the growth of the county and the county government. And I understand the job that you've been having to do over all those years. With the growth comes more expenditures. And I wish... I've tried to go through the budget, but it's confusing. I've tried to go back and look at the minutes of the budget committee meetings. And there are just a couple of things that I focused on, probably not the most important. But back on, I think it was either May 4th or 5th, you know, the budget committee approved buying land for an elementary school that would eventually also hold a middle school and probably a high school for seven... For... It added up to about $85,000 an acre. And I was stunned by that number. And I don't know if that's the going rate for acreage in Rutherford County, but I'm just wondering who negotiated that? Could we have gotten a better deal? I know land is scarce for schools. And lastly, going down the whole budget, I came to the expenditures for the nonprofits. Now, a lot of those entities are very worthy and need our support. But I especially looked at the Chamber of Commerce. They've been budgeted $720,000. Destination Rutherford is going to get $135,000. The Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Council is going to get $96,500. That totals $951,500. All of those entities have everything to do with encouraging growth in this county. And since growth is what is causing our problems, maybe we can cut those budgets a little bit and try to get them to self-fund themselves. Just something to look at. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Lyman McClatcher, and I live at 403 Pioneer Drive in Smyrna. And my property tax valuation, the value of my property went up $100,000 last year. My tax rate, or whatever I had to pay, went up about $200 or $250 more. And now I'm blown away to find out we need another big tax increase? I can't believe it.
Before we start back, I'm going to ask our chairman pro tem, Commissioner Trey Gooch, for a prayer, please.
I go to my Father in a prayer. Oh, Father, we love you and we praise your name, for we know that all good comes from you. Father, we're so thankful for people like Mr. Lyman, who thanks so much of his community that he would come out tonight and speak and give his concerns and show his compassion toward others. And Father, this time, he needs you right now. We don't know exactly what's going on, but we know that he needs you right now. So we ask that you would send down the Holy Ghost to surround him and his family and bring him back to the health, so that his family and friends and us may enjoy his company continuously. Father, we ask these and all things through Jesus's name. Amen.
Okay, Jim Thompson, I think, was the last speaker. And if he's not finished, I'm going to let you start.
I'll start alone, because I hadn't gotten... I'll just kind of make it.
Well...
I'll... Okay, yeah. Jim Thompson, 2027 Watercolor Lane. I made a comment. I was one of those 50,000 folks back in 1978. Been here since 1957. I have had an opportunity to work in other places after a 25-year career. Lived in Kansas, I lived in Georgia, and come back home and have ran two businesses since being back home since 2002. Nothing is free. And what I'm seeing today is what I just witnessed. I talked about the new schools. I talked about the new service center right there for safety. For all of these consumers that are moving to this beautiful area, they expect the same service, whether in Rockville, Leggins, whatever. It's not free. Where we're at today, we've identified we have a lot of debt. And nobody's going to pay that debt for us. We're going to have to pay that debt ourselves. We've got to figure that out. Small chunks, little chunks, whatever. Here's the issue for me. Living in Kansas, when I moved to Kansas, they attached the cost to me, being a new citizen moving into my lot. We hadn't done that now. Wouldn't you love to know since 1978, we were doing that? For my lot, for 15 years, you were going to pay for that debt for the purchase of that home. What we've got is a divide. We're afraid people won't move here. We've let the builders and the developers own this county. It's time we got to stop. What Joe's asking us to do, you can do it. Go ahead. We got to stop it. We cannot have a state delegation that's working contrary to what our local politicians are doing. You think they want to increase the debt? I mean, the taxes on us? Not in your life. But we don't have a choice but to build these. We've added hundreds of thousands of folks that are subject to emergencies. We've got to have the right people in the right place at the right time. It's not free. With that being said, the situation we're in today, we have a state delegation that has drawn the line in the sand. Call them. I've talked to Tim Rudd. I've sent Tim Rudd notes. I have always supported Tim Rudd. I'm on the line right now, whether I will or will not. I'm not getting personal with that tonight, but I've got enough information that tells me if they don't get in line, the taxpayers better wake up. It's not this group today. They got to pay the bill. It's here. Thank you.
Good evening. Mario Moreno, 4349 Fremark Drive, Smyrna. So today, I just kind of got preview to all this was going on tonight. I haven't really been in touch with a lot of stuff that's going on. A lot of you are, and I really appreciate you. So today, I listened to Mr. Harris talk on the radio about, he compared this budget to the federal budget and the pork that's in the federal budget. And he speaks to the fluff in our budget not being as much fluff. If there's any fluff in a budget, don't come asking for taxes. Don't increase our taxes if you have fluff in our budget. That's irresponsible. Running a deficit is irresponsible. If you run your own budget like that, your house, how long would you be leaving in your house? I understand you got to pay for stuff. I appreciate the guy's comment up here. I know things cost money. I know it increases over time. I understand that. 16% is a huge amount for a lot of people who are on fixed income. You have a large representation here of senior citizens who are scraping to get by today, just to buy groceries. It's expensive, and now you're going to increase the outflow of their money. Just think about it. Thank you.
Not trying to rush anybody. Take your time if you want to. But if I don't see anybody rising in the next minute here, I'm going to call on Amanda to come back. I want to give everybody a chance to speak first.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Blaine Little, and I reside at 139 Barley Drive in Christiana. The First Lady, Ms. O'Neill, thank you so much for having the courage to come up here at the very first. And she had said something about, as you're running as public servants, well, we want to be fiscally conservative. And that's wonderful. I think that's great. I think we need to keep to that. Part of leadership is not just being responsible with your budget, but it's also strategic planning. And I have helped billion-dollar corporations with their strategic planning as a corporate trainer. And it really made me start thinking, instead of saying, well, here's my promise to run for political fiscal conservancy, why not say a year ago, hey, our budget's coming out of the toilet. Here's a plan I have. And maybe someone did, but I don't recall hearing that. And we as the voters, we need to remember, even though I am a Realtor, I love farms. I don't want to see farms disappear. Pitting Realtors against farmers, that is a strategy, and it's one we need to avoid. Thank you.
I'd like for you to encourage you to come on up if you'd like to speak after I go back and start over with Amanda. Probably going to end the public hearing, so I don't want anybody to be left behind. Seeing nobody rising, Amanda, if you'd like to come back up.
Amanda Crowell, again, 2814 Crazy Horse. I am a new resident. I've only been here five years. So going back to where I was, only in 2023 was the Social Security increase sufficient, enough to cover the increase that I saw in food, drugs, gas, and interest on my mortgage and in all the escrows that I pay. I'll be the first to say that a $211 increase in my property taxes probably would not break me, but it will make me cook more dinners at home and eat out less, which I enjoy doing. I only have myself to support. But that same $211 increase represents a 16.2% increase in taxes. What about those residents who have less income and more family to support? Will they be forced to choose between paying their property tax to protect their investment in their homes, overfeeding their families, more than just low-cost, less nutritional meals to cover those costs? With that said, I respectfully request the mayor and the commissioners, including the budget commissioners committees, to reconsider raising the property taxes for now, finding other ways to get needed funds from developers, and recalling that in 2019, the Rutherford County required a 5.7% increase in our property tax rates. And I believe it was either last year or the year before there was a reassessment. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda, and thank all of you that spoke tonight. I don't see anyone else that looks like they want to speak, so I do have someone.
My name is Susan Haisley. I live at 1418 Ascot Close in Murfreesboro. I'm new to Rutherford County. I just moved here in December from Chattanooga. So therefore, I did not vote for any of you, because I did not live here at that time. But I do vote, and I do vote in every election. because I did not live here at that time. But I do vote, and I do vote in every election. I paid a boatload of money for my house, as I'm sure you all know. If I'd purchased it before COVID, the price would have been probably half of what I paid for it. Property tax goes along with that mortgage, and I'm happy to pay that. It was a neighbor this week that mentioned to me this hearing and what was going on with the taxes, and I'm very unhappy about it because I do work in a profession where we look at what our revenues are and we look at what our expenses are, and we are fiscally responsible for what we do with that money. I've learned a lot from listening to my other fellow county members here, and especially the professor, listening to things that he said. I hope you all take that into consideration. A 16% tax increase is absolutely ridiculous. And I think all of you who look at your own personal budgets and know that so many people, especially those on fixed income, do not have 16% salary increases, be it Social Security or from even high corporate-paying jobs. It doesn't happen that way. We do need good education, schools. We need firefighters that are well-trained and equipped. We do need the police. I do believe that all of that is necessary when you have a growing economic environment. But it is really important that you take a solid look at other options for how to raise that money, so that the citizens here can afford to live here and do not need to move out of the county to live somewhere else. I was very happy with the tax structure in Chattanooga. I am now going to make it a mission to look at what Chattanooga did and how that compares to what Rutherford County is doing. And I will be back with other information that will help me better understand any other future financial decisions going on within this county. Thank you.
Seeing no one rising, we are going to end the public hearing at this time. I will ask our budget committee to remain for a moment or two and discuss our next meeting. We have the option, speaking to the budget committee, to meet tomorrow night. We can, at that time, discuss what we've heard from the public and make a decision at that time on what we want to do as far as a tax increase or not, or something else. But I want to hear from our committee. You're suggesting our next scheduled meeting, I believe, is the 21st. Is that correct? So on the 21st, at the latest, we will need to have a proposal from our committee to go to the full commission for the 26th. And when I say that's kind of a drop-dead date, that will, that will barely give Michael and Mark and our finance people time to get this all together. Michael, if you want to say something along those lines about deadlines now, we could vote tomorrow night, could vote tonight, but my personal gut feelings are, I want to discuss what these folks have brought to us tonight. I know we haven't answered questions. There's a lot of questions out here, and there's a ton of them. I was dying to say yes, and here's why. But I think it'd be better saved for tomorrow night, personally. But I would entertain a motion from the budget committee on when we will meet next, whether we will meet tomorrow night or on the 21st. Or I'll open the floor to any comments. Commissioner Irving?
I'll make a motion to meet tomorrow night.
Okay, I have a motion to... Will? Excuse me, I was mistaken. I thought that we had already canceled it and had it.
Tomorrow is scheduled for tomorrow night. It's on the calendar if the budget committee would like to meet.
So thank you, Commissioner Irving. Is there a motion to not meet tomorrow night? If there's not, then we will be here at 5:30 tomorrow night to discuss this. And at that time, hopefully, we can come to an agreement on how we want to go forward with our finances this year. Any comment from anybody from budget? Anyone from our other commissioners that are visiting with us? Hearing none. I want to thank you folks that are sitting out here. I want to thank Mr. Thompson, especially. He's right. We all pay these taxes. Our family pays these taxes. It hurts all of us to have to do something like this. But when you're in this position, you may not have voted for half the things that we're financing, but our job here is to figure out how to pay for that and do that in the best and most efficient way. Again, thank you for your participation, and thank you for coming. And we are listening. Chairman Gooch?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just be mindful, I would like to thank our first responders for being here tonight. I think they're always here. And Commissioner Bevry?
Any other comments from committee? Hearing none, we're adjourned.